So I think we should go ahead and start with the first item on our which is a public hearing to discuss a petition zoning amendment. Under RSA six, seven, five, colon, four, for the 2025 March town meeting. The petitioner would like to change section four point six, five dash C dash two of the line ordinance, zoning ordinance from no underground fuel storage tanks are permitted to no underground oil storage tanks for N as defined in that New Hampshire RSA one forty-six dash A, colon, two, comma, three, are permitted. Propane and natural gas tanks are excluded from this provision. I guess Rich Brown is the primary proponent of this. And so.
In his capacity as an individual.
As correct.
Exactly.
And I guess, yeah, I'll be good at that. So. So I guess, David, what we want to do is actually have Rich provide information about this for us to consider and then we can discuss it after that.
I would just bring up the beginning. The four, six, five refers to the flood zone area, not the shoreline. So I think that was done by mistake, but unfortunately, because it's a petition warrant article, there is no way at the moment to go back and change that. So it would still, this would change the flood zone area, but not the shoreline is, I think you were originally intending.
Does that even help you then? So I think there's going to be more discussion here. So I guess I'd like to, I have a relatively short presentation. And so, Rich, I guess I am formally recusing myself from the board.
Yes, thank you.
For this part of the discussion. And so let me just go through this presentation and then, and then we can talk. I know Mike Hensley has some thoughts about this as well. And so that may, that may involve something. So the line ordinance says that the primary objective of the shoreline conservation district.
We're not talking about that though, are we?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Your, your petition doesn't talk about that, correct?
About, I'm sorry.
Your petitioned amendment deals not with the shoreline district, but with the flood-prone district?
So.
So we should not be talking about the shoreline district if we're not changing the shoreline district, okay? We can talk about it once the public hearing is over, but let's not talk about it now. Let's talk about the flood, what you've suggested for a change, which is the flood-prone district.
So I know there is a concept of a Scrivener's error in a, in legal documents. I think it's, it's very clear to all the people that signed the petition that this is what was intended. And so I think that I would ask the board to, to hear me out. I know that, that Mike Hensley also had some thoughts about this that might in fact cause there to be a change to it. And so.
A change to your amendment or a change to the ordinance?
Well, he had some suggestions that might make such an amendment stronger or make in fact a new amendment stronger.
Okay, so you know that when there's a petitioned amendment, it's going to town meeting as drafted, we cannot change it. So you're then suggesting possibly that the planning board develop an amendment in addition to yours?
Or in lieu of?
Or in lieu of.
No, we can't be in lieu of, this is going to town meeting as drafted.
Well, I understand, but subsequently amend the.
We can do our own.
We can do our own, is I think is what he's suggesting.
I see.
Right. So.
Well, we're having a public hearing right now, which has been notified on, so let's get done with the public hearing and then let's talk about other ideas you might have.
Okay. I have a fairly short presentation. I mean, you've seen the, the gist of it. And so the objective of the shoreline conservation district is to preserve and protect the town's surface waters by permitting only those uses which can harmoniously, appropriately, and safely be located adjacent to surface waters. The ordinance then goes on to prohibit underground fuel tanks in that district which extends 200 feet from major water bodies such as Post Pond. This language seems overbroad because it lumps oil, gas, propane, and natural gas together. There are strong national and New Hampshire regulations on oil tanks, but these explicitly exclude buried propane and natural gas. The language from NHRSA defines oil and its regulations, but it explicitly states that the term oil shall not include natural gas, liquefied petroleum, or synthetic gas. Our gas installer confirmed there are no national codes at a license renewal training and the New Hampshire DES page states that underground storage tanks for propane or natural gas are not a state concern. Last fall, Lynn and I installed a generator with a buried propane tank. I now understand that we should have obtained a zoning permit. Prior to starting, this issue would have come up earlier. However, I would still be here requesting this amendment. Almost my entire home, built in 1804, is within the shoreline conservation district. The land is already disturbed and that tank location is close to my generator and the best site for filling the tank. Consequently, a number of residents worked with me to submit this petitioned amendment to change the ordinance. The amended language states, what Rich read, I won't take that time. So the question I bring to the planning board is whether allowing underground propane and natural gas tanks in the shoreline conservation district meets the intent of the ordinance to be harmoniously, appropriately, and safely located. I know that several people have written to the zoning administrator in support of this amendment. I also took the opportunity to chat with David Robey, who stated the distinction between oil and propane tanks was never considered when they were drafted in the original ordinance, and he gave his support. I would ask the board to recommend this amendment to the town warrant in March. Thank you. So.
Okay. But that's, you, you're talking about iffy things. You're not talking about the floodplain thing, which we do have before us. So do you have anything to say about underground tanks in the floodplain?
No, I don't.
Okay, because they float and they need special, special gear to hold them down.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so.
And they have to be covered in concrete.
Yeah, so it's.
That's the thing.
It's different.
Yes.
So I'd like to, I, me personally, I'd like to stay focused on what we've got going to town meeting and then we can talk about the other thing.
Dave, can you elucidate for, for me at least, what the, when I was looking at this, it seemed to me that a lot of locales have, have regulations that require tanks in floodplain that is propane or otherwise to be anchored with an engineering's report to make sure that they don't break loose and then start a fire or hurt somebody.
That's true.
I have a manual from FEMA on how to anchor.
And do we do that? Do we require that in the floodplain already?
Yes, I, when I approve tanks in the floodplain that are above ground, I've never had to do one underground, but above ground, I require them.
I think it's the same issue.
I think, doesn't our zoning say no fuel tanks, underground fuel tanks in the floodplain or in the.
Yes, but above ground tanks are allowed, but even above ground tanks that are in the floodplain, I require them to be anchored.
Did Rich and his wife seek a variance for this?
Yes.
And they were denied?
Yes.
Okay.
Rich.
Brown.
Oh, I see.
And was that for shoreline district or was that for floodplain?
Shoreline, it's not, that, his tank is not in the floodplain.
Oh, okay.
That's sort of surprising, isn't it?
It actually comes up high enough, and when you look at the area north of Post Pond is very flat and very low in elevation.
So if it flooded.
It flooded, it's all going to go down Claybrook and not rise. It's going to take a lot of water to get.
Take out the ball field.
Well, it's not going to, it's, it's going to take out the Edgell Bridge because it connected, it's going to be up over its banks.
Yeah, her house. So Rich, you couldn't apply for a special exception because the zoning doesn't.
That's right, there, there was no special exception available.
So you had to go for a variant, yeah.
Right.
Which is harder to give.
The, the ZBA was correct. The ordinance says no underground fuel tanks. And there's no way that a propane tank's not a fuel tank.
If this thing passes, it doesn't help you.
Correct.
No.
Yes. And so, I mean, one of those, why, why don't you just withdraw it and redo it so that it works or.
Well, to withdraw it, you would.
You can't withdraw it or.
All, all the signatures.
All the signatory, everyone who signed it will have to sign the withdrawal.
I see.
Have to sign to withdraw it?
Yep.
Yes.
But you might be able to.
They have to re-sign the new petition, correct?
Right, but it would be too late.
Too late for a petition.
Yeah, for this year.
We have had another petition in the past that they decided to withdraw it. And in talking with town council, they said if all the signatories of the original one signed the withdrawal, then that could be accepted. But without that, it cannot be withdrawn.
But why go through the hassle of fighting to get this approved if it's going to help you?
And you didn't notice when it was first?
Unfortunately, I was looking at the wording of the changed language and not the, the section.
It's not up to David to draft petition amendments.
Oh, no, he would notice.
Yeah, I, I did not catch it.
Process them as submitted by the applicants.
That was more my concern.
Everybody who signed it also, I mean.
No, I'm just asking, I mean, if it's, if it's so obvious.
Well, wasn't I, Tim caught it today, that it was not, you know, I wish I had got it earlier.
Nice catch.
Well, I wonder.
I sympathize with you, Rich.
Thank you, Tim.
Because, yeah, I mean, it's one of those things, it's just, yeah.
So what's the, what's the right section? Okay, well, can we finish the public hearing? There may be people who have public comment because we're having a public hearing, so we should hear about people.
Michael, do you want to weigh in maybe? In fact, I, I spoke to Michael briefly and I know you had some thoughts.
I had a conversation with David today. So I'm coming representing the Lime Fire Department as a deputy fire chief and the person who inspects and does the gas code and the other inspections. And the first thing I did is when I looked at the town, I'm like, what the hell? It's four point six, five, and we're supposed to be in four point six, three. So, and in four point six, five, the Lime Fire Department will be in touch with the Lime, with the Fire Marshal's office because what is being proposed is contrary and would not, and we cannot support it in that flood-prone area. We just don't do it. FEMA won't allow us to do it. It will jeopardize a bunch of different funding sources, putting fuels and other stuff developing into flood-prone areas. We just don't do it. But the, if, so, but what I would say is trying to go on Vicky's line of staying within that amendment, if that amendment was four point six, three, and not four point six, five, I do think that propane is different than diesel and heating oil. And the occult type of ground contamination that we get is different. It's pressurized, it raises, it vaporizes, and it goes away. And the nature of propane is you know when something is gone and you have a leak. The key thing is, we also have very intricate inspections and code things on how we can install something in a shoreline, you know, in this, this type of area or a flood-prone area. The NFPA and state allows us to bury tanks in flood-prone areas. And we have code that's prescriptive on how we do it. The reason that the Fire Marshal's Office in New Hampshire DES doesn't have anything that's called for a shoreline conservation district is because it's something that's constructed by the town of Lime. It's not in code. They don't use that phrase. So local land use, local land regulation, for me, I do believe in Chief Rich and former Chief Monday, we are in agreement that it would be appropriate and it would not be environmentally, it would cause contamination if there's a leak, everything causes contamination. But we would not be opposed to the installation of a propane, underground propane tank that was properly installed, properly permitted, to be installed inside of the shoreline conservation district. But it should be, in the language of the petition, warrant, whatever that proper phrase is, basically says it shall be permitted. My belief is that is not accurate and we are not supportive of that. We believe that the language should be similar to many of the other things that are in the land use regulation that says this can be done with a special exception. That includes, you know, consulting the zoning administrator, the highway, the fire department, and maybe police or whatever. Because I do think, and the conservation commission. I think that there are means and methods that we could properly install a propane tank underground that actually, that is safe, that is environmentally responsible, and it's effective. And the reality is, it's much safer to have it underground. It's thermally stable, we can do it with less piping, less numbers of tanks, and it doesn't get hit by plow trucks and those stuff like that causing catastrophic release. So, but when it's installed, it's not installed without a permit. It's installed so that, and you'll see, you go to parking lots and you go to other fast food places and you'll see a five by eight foot or a six by eighteen foot sandbox with gravel, and there's a propane tank underneath it. And so when there's a catastrophic release, it's an impermeable surface, the gas can come up and go away and doesn't contaminate the groundwater. There's ways that we can do it that tells what to do. I think that it's, I, I think that the ordinance as drawn, at the time it was drawn, if we literally tried to parse out every possible condition or situation that would come up, we could never have land use regulation in place. I think some of the reasons why we've been able to get through catastrophic weather events and other problems is because we've got really good land use regulation in place. But, well, we found something that we might need to modify this. I do think I would be, the fire department would be supportive of having an amendment to four point six, three of the land, town of Lime land use regulation ordinance that would allow buried propane tanks by special exception. That's what I have, sorry.
Thank you.
It looks like we've got one public on one. I wonder if they have any comments.
That's, that's Lynn Brown.
Well, she might have a comment.
But maybe, I don't, I, I won't, I won't prejudice discussion about whether it's good that the microphone is on or off.
It's off.
No, but we certainly could invite her to, to speak.
Well, I, I just, because I would like to comment on the aspect of the shoreline stuff, but I believe that it's inappropriate to do that until we finish our public hearing on the shore, on the floodplain stuff.
I, if we were willing to continue this discussion at the close of a public hearing on the particular wording that's here, I would, I would certainly support that. I mean, I, I'm very interested in what Mike, Michael has to say. Be interested to hear what she's saying too, Vicky, and so if we wanted to close that public hearing.
Let me say, Lynn, do you have any comment you would like to make?
I'm, no, I'm saddened. I'm, I'm saddened that Rich reached out to Mr. Hensley a long time ago and did not hear from him. I'm sorry that David Robbins didn't catch this, this error. I mean, I, I don't think anyone ever wants to look like a fool, and this makes us look like a fool. And, and that's, that saddens me. And so, thank you for hearing me and I'll let the meeting continue, continue that you can assume that public people are gone now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. So I, I don't think anybody disputes the fact that it's unfortunate that the wrong section was cited. So I guess the question is, where do we want to go? I guess looking for a board member comments on the amendment as, as written.
Do we need to close the public hearing before we debate internally? I don't know what.
No, we, I just, I'm not sure of the procedure.
So I believe, just as you have to hold a public hearing and then vote whether you would approve or disapprove of the amendment.
So I'll move that we disapprove, right? I mean, there's no one that's going to support this, I don't think. I think you supported.
Well, we have a motion to not support it.
To not support it.
So now we can have discussion on the motion.
I'll, I, I, one, don't support it because it's an error and doesn't benefit anybody, but two, I don't believe that if you look at the other purposes in the floodplain district, that this is consistent with it. And whether or not it's environmentally harmless or not, it's not consistent with the types of uses that are envisioned in the concert, in the flood-prone district. So that's why primarily I'm totally against it.
Yeah, and I think from what Michael said, we really shouldn't have tanks in the flood, flood, flood district.
He said you can have tanks.
Unless it's very carefully worded.
But they need to be carefully designed and secured and all that. I mean, his point was, Rich has brought this forward to be, you know, very permissive thing where you can just get a permit. And what the fire department would rather see is that it be a special exception so that they have an opportunity to weigh in on it and as well as other, you know, but anyway. And I, I think that that's a good point also. I would think that it's more of a conversation when you get into the conservation districts. And I think the conditional use, special exception allows you to do that. But that's, I mean, that's the reason why I'm not supporting it is because of the, the point of the district, the rules of the district.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that's, I mean, that's, that would be my reasoning as well. I, I think also it's interesting, the information, some of the information that Rich did provide, you know, does indicate that the state, the DES doesn't regulate propane tanks. But it does say contact your fire department or the fire marshal, state fire marshal. And I think that the absence of that information, it, it doesn't help this at all. But yeah, I think to just grant blanket approval in the floodplain is, is, you know, not, not a wise thing or consistent with the intent of the floodplain district.
Yeah, it should at least have special exception.
Well, in the floodplain district, I, I don't think it should be allowed, period. Any, anyone else? Do we have any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the, could you restate the motion?
Motion would be to not support, decline to support the, the petition warrant.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion to not support the petitioned amendment, say aye. Aye. All those oppose? Or none? So the planning board does not support the petitioned amendment? So.
The petitioner wouldn't support the petitioned amendment if he could rewrite it. So, yeah, right.
So I, I, I think, I think it's probably appropriate to discuss what other avenues may be available. I, I'm getting the sense that there are probably none at this point in time before the town meeting of 2025.
David, can you explain to me, I'm probably the most ignorant person in this room about this, but procedurally, if we wanted to amend the shoreline, the, the correct provision in the, in the zoning code to allow propane tanks subject to some sort of engineering review or, or review by the appropriate parties, what's the, what's the process? Do we have to wait for town meeting and do a warrant article or can we just do that on our own?
No, you have to do, to change the zoning ordinance, it has to be proposed at town meeting and put on the ballot.
Okay, and we're too late for that this year?
We're really close. I would have to look, I can actually, if you give me a second, I can look up the.
Is there any appetite among the, on the board for trying to do that if we have time to do it?
If we could get information, enough information.
I, I would be interested in knowing from Michael Hensley, who's here on behalf of the fire department, how close would he feel is safe within the shoreline district? Because I.
How close to?
How close to the water's edge? I mean, I don't think five feet is the same as 195. And so like, where's the tolerance in there for what would be acceptable to the fire department?
Fortunately, it's not a matter of opinion, it's actually written. We have a code, it's codified. For me, I believe that with the exception of the typo from a three to a five, and the, the absence of the review and a special exception, the fire department would have been supportive of this. The key thing is, you can have things within a shoreline protection district, and a shoreline protection district is defined, it's like 150 or 200 feet from shoreline. We modified that in the state of New Hampshire, deferring from the national code specifically based upon the installation of underground tanks on Lake Winnipesaukee for a number of houses. And that's when this, so New Hampshire is slightly different than the national code. The closer you get to water, the more involved the engineering is. And so you can have physical barriers, you have, there's a number of different ways that you can have that are protective structures that not only prevent lifting and buoyancy issues, but if there is an issue and detection systems that are in place. So for mine is, there is, for the fire department, there is no way for me to give you a number to say how close that you could be because you literally can build things all but into the water that meet national code. Because, but it's just, it's more technical and it's more expensive.
Okay, just.
But what I would say is, within the shoreline conservation district, it doesn't, there's no code that talks about shoreline conservation district.
I understand.
But as close as we can get to water's edge or a stream or a creek, there is a way, if you can build it safely and to meet code.
I mean, there, there's something, it appears that, that people aren't generally that concerned about this. And, or they just haven't thought about it because the natural tendency is to think that propane vaporizes and, and it goes away. You know, the odorant is Mercaptin, and so I looked up, you know, I got the material data safety sheet for that. And Mercaptin is not something that you want in aquatic life. It's, it's, you know, it's a category one hazard to aquatic life. So, you know, I know they don't put a ton of it in there, but I mean, we all know where MTBE went with gasoline and all you have to do is overfill your lung war and you can potentially have an MTBE problem in your drinking water well. So. So, I do feel that there's got to be some sort of isolation distance between the bodies of water and a below-ground tank.
Before we get too far into this, can I just, can we, if it's not possible to do, if we don't have time to do it at all, then that will save us, when we get home and watch X and Y.
Basically, we have to publish the first public, the first notice tomorrow for a public hearing.
And then we'd have to have a public hearing prior to?
The first, last day for the first hearing would be the 20th. So, between the 10th and the 20th, you have to have a hearing, but I can't notice a hearing without language.
Yeah, so we'd have to draft something tonight.
Tonight.
Yeah. I frankly don't have the appetite for that.
Well, I'll just say right now, I really feel bad for Lynn or Rich. And I'm sorry that they didn't get their variance, but I also don't think it's the right thing to do to put tanks in the shoreline district. Because, again, look at the purposes of that district. I mean, why don't we put some other things in there too if we're going to do underground propane tanks? You know, that's there to provide repairing buffer for the water bodies, it's there for wildlife, it's there for people to recreate, and it's not for residential development.
We don't prohibit the tanks, we just prohibit burying them, which is kind of weird, right?
Right, right.
That's your alternative, right? Your alternative, if you, if nothing happens, is you have to pull the tank out of the ground and put it above ground.
Yes. Well, or you could, you could just move, can you move it back more than 201 feet and then just run a line to the generator?
Well, except there's ledge, the easy way to do it is ledge. And it also puts it pretty far up behind my garage, which is a hard place to refuel. And so, yeah. So, Rich, I would say, is there, you know, I would ask this group, well, first off, is public hearing closed?
Yes, we've already voted to not support it.
Let's form a vote.
No, we already did.
Yeah, okay. I would very strongly support the kind of language that Mike, Mike suggests, that it be permitted with the appropriate inspection by fire department, by other groups. And, you know, I don't know how hard, I mean, there is prototype language in the ordinance that lists permitted uses, special exceptions, and then prohibited uses. There could be a special exception added in that says propane and natural gas tanks are permitted with permission of thus and such. And I think, I don't think that would be that difficult to devise language even today that would meet those goals, meet my personal goal.
Right.
And that that then could.
Well, I would love to help you out, but I don't want that as a blanket thing that everybody in town can do. I don't think it's the right thing to do with that district. So, I am not interested in sitting here and drafting, but if everybody else wants to, that would be totally fine with me, because that's how our democracy works. You've got enough people, go for it.
So, Mickey, are you saying that, or you're thinking that we shouldn't have any fuel tanks buried in the shoreline district at all?
I don't, I, I'm okay with the language as it is. It's my personal.
In the way that zoning is now.
Yes.
But isn't that common? You think, I mean, I don't know, I mean, what we're doing is we're prohibiting buried tanks, but we don't prohibit above-ground tanks. Like, in terms of the sorts of problems that you can envision, I, it's hard for me to see any delta between burying them and.
Well, burying disturbs the soil. If, you know, a leak, you're going to.
It also probably makes it less likely that it gets dislodged by a truck or by an accident.
Yeah, but Mike was saying that, that it's safer to have them under the ground.
Yep, well.
But, you know, I would like to, you know, from the zoning administration perspective, you know, not all areas are equal. You know, we have this 200-foot area from the shoreline out. And when you look within that 200-foot area, you know, if you were to bury a propane tank next to the tennis courts, you're probably going to hit water.
So, maybe we would permit it from 100 to 200 feet or something?
Right, I think the board needs to seriously, you know, if you want to make a change, seriously look at what would be the appropriate locations. It may be that you want to look at pre-zoning structures and say that a special exception would be allowed for pre-zoning structures that are within the shoreline and the tank is within however many feet of that existing structure, and then not allow them for new structures. You know, I think there's a lot of things that need to be considered that trying to.
You can't do that tonight.
And that's unfortunate, you know, and again, I feel for you, Rich, but I just, I feel that, you know, not every area within the shoreline is equal.
That's a good point. So, you can't put yours just above ground?
I could, yes. I mean, it's.
We'd rather have it underground so we don't have to look at it, right?
I think so, yes. I mean, you know, if I wanted to be nasty, I could put that big white tank 25 and 1/2 feet from the center line of the road, and everyone in line could see it for the rest of time. I don't know that that's, you know, I don't want to do that.
Okay.
But, but that would be absolutely legal. I'd have, I'd probably have to weigh it down. I'd actually like to hear Michael talk a little more about, I mean, we're talking about, well, if it's closer to the water or farther from the water, I mean, do the standards that, you know, you've skimmed them, you don't know them exclusively, but.
No, we've been spending a bunch of time with the fire marshal's office in New Hampshire DES talking about it, and DES doesn't even cover them. But mine is, I think that, I don't think that the land use regulation is the place to sit there and go into the nitty-gritty of what the code requirements are for feet back. I think it's permitted, I, my belief is that due to the fact that we have a number of pre, you know, structures and properties that were developed before zoning started, it's, I think it's appropriate for us to say that you're, that the zoning land use regulation says you can have a buried tank within the shoreline conservation district with a special exception. And I think that's all the language you have to have.
So, you're saying not just propane, but any kind of fuel?
No, I think propane. Mine is specifically, no, because my thing's like, I misspoke then.
Okay, okay.
But I'm not, the reality is, is diesel and heating oil, gasoline does not belong there. There's this, there's another thing that I have not spoken about yet. When we have a heating oil leak in our house, and then it goes, it's in our house, and then it just goes down the drain in the basement, there's a number of ways that we have stuff, and then it falls upon the homeowner. Difference is, propane, that liability falls on the fuel oil supplier. So, we could have a tech that comes in that modifies the gas appliance, adds a gas fireplace, and then as soon as a propane dealer hooks up and delivers one drop of propane, that liability for release, explosion, fire, death, dismemberment, or hazardous contamination in state New Hampshire falls on the propane supplier. Which is why we have, our propane suppliers are very active advocates for the safety and the installation and code compliance of it. Our carbon monoxide, biggest suppliers, the people who are advocating for it and supporting it are the propane dealers. That, but, we're not getting releases in the propane because propane dealers, you switch a dealer, they're going to inspect that tank. And if it's buried, they expose it, they make sure that the anodes and stuff are in place, that they're properly connected. That's why I feel safe having a buried propane tank, because it's, because the laws and the liabilities associated with propane specifically, it's, they're monitored and they're careful and they're supported. I think that the shoreline conservation district, by special exception, is an appropriate, it's an appropriate add-on to our land use regulations. And the fire department supports it.
So, Michael, just hypothetically, if, let's say, we, line does change our zoning, so we can have one by special, special exception in the shoreline, somebody comes in to do it. Now, so how would that, I mean, how would, David would know about it, but then would, who would be monitoring, I mean, who would, would it be the?
So, when it comes.
Putting it in?
Yeah, something, no, something comes to David, and then if it's something like that, then he'll call, he'll ask, we have a conversation back and forth. You have any question with that?
He'd call the fire department.
Yeah. And that's, that's the normal.
Right. But then who would oversee as it goes, when the tank goes in?
Propane installers, the propane tank installer.
Because it's in the shoreline district, they have to do more.
No, no, because it's propane. And when it's propane, the propane dealer, they're going to make sure that it's dug to the right depth, that it's at perfectly level, that the backfilling material is a manufactured sand or sand.
Right.
It's not abrasive, or that the tank, you know, is properly anchored. Because if something goes wrong, they're on the hook for it.
But they differentiate between the shoreline district or somewhere else.
They don't differ, nobody differs between shoreline conservation district, because shoreline conservation district is a line thing, not a national code thing. But every tank that's installed with propane is heavily regulated and inspected.
So, has Rich's tank been properly installed?
We don't know. It was installed without any.
Right. Michael has not seen it. It was installed by a licensed installer. I have to assume it was done properly, especially hearing the serious consequences. So, I think, I think what, what the issue is here, if somebody comes into David and says, I want to put, bury a propane tank in the shoreline conservation district, David says, you need a special exception. I mean, this is the language I'm suggesting. You need a special exception, you go, you talk with the fire marshal, you talk with other interested parties that we can specify in the, in the language. You go to the zoning board, the zoning board says, what are you doing? Uh huh, uh huh. And, and Michael Hensley said it's okay, and these people, and everybody said it's okay? Then it proceeds. At that point, the propane, tell, pull me off the wires if I'm wrong here, the propane installer then follows all the rules and does it right.
But if he doesn't differentiate between the shoreline district, I mean, our own line, and anywhere else, then when they install it, it's being installed exactly the same way, whether it's in the shoreline district or not?
Flood-prone areas are installed differently.
Right, if there's a flood-prone area that will be.
So, they would have to know, the installer would have to know that it's.
Well, and they would talk to Michael.
And we'll get, we'll get calls from different installers saying, the guy's worried that this is wet, this is a flood-prone area. So, at the fire department, we literally, it's like our emergency, flood-prone areas, and it's got to line up. We're like, yeah, that looks like it's a flood-prone area.
It would get caught.
So, they say, okay, we're not going to, we either, you have to pay for, you know, additional fittings and a different sacrificial anode, there's a whole host of different things that they can do if they're going to bury it there, or they say, you know what, we're going to move it up there, or you got to go above ground.
Right. Okay, so, I'll throw out that the nice part about saying it requires a special exception to put it in the shoreline conservation district is, it's easy language to put in the ordinance. You need a special exception with approvals by the fire department, whoever else.
It's also part of the ZBA process. When you're got, it's already in process. Mine is the language and the function and the form that we need is already in existence. It's 89. What we need to do is say, I would just, I mean, we basically could be supportive of that document if it was a three instead of a five, and it included the words, requires a special exception.
Right. So, Rich, I was thinking for you, maybe, I don't know what the timing would be, but if, if the planning board, we change the, if we do, we change the zoning, make it a special exception, if you don't mind waiting a while, you could, you know, you could do it, redo it after that's done, you could put it where you want it with a special exception.
Or maybe leave it there. I mean, it would require bringing in the fire department to say, you know, how is this done? They, they would clearly want to check it off and say, oh, this is, this is just fine.
Right.
Or not, in which case, I still need to fix it.
But unless, unless we do make it a special exception, you're still kind of stuck.
Well, I mean, so, in my personal situation, David informed me of a problem, I went to the ZBA, the ZBA denied me. I have spoken to the select board and said, may I have an abeyance on enforcement while this amendment goes through the process? Because if there's no harm, it's okay to stay there. Clearly, if, if there were harm, or if the town voted not to make the change to the ordinance, I got to move it. I mean, that's, that's very straightforward. I haven't spoken to the, to the select board yet, but I presume if I needed a special exception, which required inspection by the various authorities, that, that would be good. I'm hopeful that the select board would continue not to enforce that, pending the outcome of that.
But realistically, it sounds like we, we might not be able to change the zoning until, not this town meeting, but the next year, 2026.
When I hear Michael say this, if, if we changed, let me get the right number here. If we change the proper section of the line ordinance to say propane and natural gas tanks are permitted by special exception, that would, I think, so that's why, Michael, I think that, I think that's what he's saying, would certainly solve my problem and permit other people.
So, what you're suggesting is that, that we as a board propose an amendment, adopt that language right now, tonight, without any further investigation or study or thought, and schedule a public hearing, and then this goes forward?
That would be incredibly helpful for me, and I think useful for people in line.
Come on. It's going to be incredibly helpful for you, and it gets the town out of an enforcement issue. And by the way, I don't think that how you've worded it would be the appropriate thing, because you want to modify the special exception list that already exists to add whatever you want to put in there, and not whatever language you have. So, I happen, my kid bought a house in Lebanon, so I happen to have the Lebanon zoning, and they specifically exempt propane tanks from this part of the ordinance about being in the shoreline district.
Yeah, but that's not what we'd want to do, right? We'd want to make it.
No, I'm just saying that there is precedent for others treating propane tanks differently.
I mean, personally, I'm reasonably supportive of what Rich wants to do here, I'm just not sure that, trying to do something tonight feels kind of rushed.
Yeah.
And it feels like something where we'd want to take a little more time and think about it and study it, maybe think about proposals like.
Well, we need.
Having some limitation in as far as how close you get to the water.
Needs to fit into our regulation, which would be amending, you know, 463B by adding amendment number seven, which would be the, you know, the propane tank. It's not how he's suggesting it, and I don't know what else needs to be changed. But, that's the thing that you get when you're doing, you know, 23rd hour zoning amendments, is you get something that you really don't want.
Yeah, and we don't want to create a problem or create.
Right, we'd solve one problem and create unintended consequences as a result of it.
That's the way to amend it.
I mean, I, I totally sympathize with what, you know, Rich is doing. I don't know where the groundwater table is. I mean, I'm, I would think that even in that installation, that that tank should be, you know, anchored down and ballasted and anchored down, because I can't believe that the water table isn't pretty darn close to the.
Well, but there again, this is a, this is a matter for the expertise of the fire department.
Right.
Okay, well, presumably the guy put it in correctly.
And I presume that that's.
So, you didn't get a zoning permit at all? This just, just went between you and your contractor?
I mean, I, I just think that it.
Did they do any engineering in terms of anchoring the tank, or is the tank anchored at all? Is it, what I, what I read when I was trying to research this before our hearing was that a lot of times what they do is they have these big, like. a lot of times what they do is they have these big, like, corkscrewy things that they drive into the ground, and then they use those to attach steel straps that go over the tank. So if there's water that inundates the area, the tank doesn't, 'cause even if it's buried, if the water, if the ground becomes sufficiently wet, it'll just float up, and then it breaks free from its pipes, and then you have.
Bad.
I, I'm not even worried about the, so much about the environmental impact, but you could have people who get killed or burned or.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So, as far as you know, there was no engineering that said, okay, here's how, what we need to do to anchor a tank of this size in this location, and here's how we're gonna anchor it, they just dug a hole and buried it.
Well, so there's a licensed propane installer who worked with our excavator to say, "I want it like this, and, and I know there's sand there, and I know the other thing to install."
If it's just saying that it's not installed through, what would be considered a flood, for a floodplain?
Well.
It would need to be a, you know, a concrete base underneath the, the tank, straps, and then a concrete ballast around.
But is, is this a floodplain?
No, it is not.
Okay, right, so.
But.
So I, I am working under the naive assumption that it was installed properly because a licensed installer.
Yeah. The other thing is, I don't think natural gas needs to be referred to. We don't usually have natural gas in tanks for our household use.
Right.
So you wouldn't, you don't, you can just leave that part out of the, right?
We're not gonna have any natural gas utility, I'm pretty sure.
Exactly, exactly.
So your, your options are gonna be.
Natural gas in tanks.
Right.
Pull it out and, and put it above ground.
Household use, so.
Move it.
Move it a great distance, yeah.
Or come to the, or, 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 or commit to redoing this again next year and see if the select board would support holding enforcement and abeyance for another year. I don't have, I, I'm not suggesting that we would or wouldn't, I don't have any idea. I haven't discussed it with anyone, and I haven't even thought about it, really.
I think you've covered the waterfront.
Well, I, I mean, I, I guess the question is, are we amenable to trying to do a last-minute amendment? Or are we thinking that there are just too many balls in the air that, that we may miss something and create a problem that we're totally unaware of as, as a result of doing this at the last minute? What, what's the sense, do I need to get a vote here, or a straw poll, or?
I would do a straw poll, there's no.
We don't have to vote to not do something.
We did just vote to not do something.
Well, we could, we could go ahead and vote, does, does anybody want to write a, write the amendment tonight?
We'd be here till midnight.
Isn't even that, I, I sorta feel like this is something you'd wanna think about a little bit, you might wanna do some research, you might wanna talk to people a little bit, you might wanna have a public hearing that, or, or an informal hearing where people could come in and present views if they had them, if people have strong. I just think, as sympathetic as I am to Rich's plight, I, I think that it's not good legislative process to try to solve this problem in, you know, fifteen minutes after we discovered the error in his petition.
Well, also, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, but is the sense of the board that they would take on writing a normal warrant article so that Rich doesn't have to go through petitioning?
Next year, maybe?
Yes.
If he decides he wants to do that, he may go home and think about this for a week or two and go, "Screw it, I'm just gonna put it above ground, it's not worth the trouble."
Well, he'd have to unbury it now.
But he's gonna have to do that anyways.
Not, I, I'm not necessarily.
Rich, do you own the tank, or do they, they own it?
I think I own it, yeah.
I don't think you do.
Sounds like to me, even if we approve this, it would be subject to review, and it doesn't sound like he's done the stuff that he would need to do in an area where it's.
It's not a floodplain.
But it's, yeah.
It's a Shoreline District.
Still, still in there where there's a possibility of inundation.
He might have a high groundwater table, we don't, I mean, that's.
I don't know, I, I'd want an engineer to tell me that, whether or not it needs to be anchored or not, but.
I'd say, I think that's something else that you wanna consider, is do you wanna have, you know, an engineer design the, the installation, you know, or, or at least have the ZBA look at that, you know, that's.
Those are all things that.
The ZBA shouldn't be looking at installations, 'cause the code should be, it should be built according to code, 'cause we don't have propane installation designer people on the zoning board, so we don't wanna get them in that.
Well, I'd say that's, you want to have, you know, a consultant, but that's just a question that needs to be at least discussed.
Well, and I think if you own your tank, I'm not sure about this, but you, the owner may be responsible, so maybe the installer just says, "Well, you own the tank, so I don't care." 'Cause I own my tank, and I had to, yeah, I had to go through some hoops to do, 'cause I wanted, when I initially wanted to install it, they didn't want me to own it, 'cause they, they wanna own it so that you have to buy propane from them.
Right.
But now I can buy propane from whoever I want, I said, "No, I wanna own the tank." So I own mine, but most people, I think, to put the tanks in.
Yeah, in twenty-five years, we, we went from Dead River to Irving, and we had to pull out an enormous submarine and bury a new one.
Because, 'cause they own it?
They own it.
Right.
But when I talked to Simple, Simple Energy about transferring, they would deal with Irving directly.
Yeah, they trade tanks.
Yeah, Simple Energy put mine in, but I own it, so.
But by and large, you don't.
I also get eighty cents off a gallon if you own your own tank.
So Vicki.
So anyway, Rich, you should, yeah, you should figure out, because it might make a difference, 'cause if, they might say, as I said, they might say, "Well, the owner owns it, I mean, the homeowner owns it, so we don't care," they might, who knows? You know, they might not worry about when they put it in, much about it, you know, 'cause it was, maybe it's your responsibility.
We're getting, we're getting very much into my situation here, not quite so much public policy.
Well, I'm just saying, you might.
Yeah, but thank you, that's, that's interesting advice, good advice.
I would like to, if we're gonna do this, that we look at other zoning districts that they should be permitted in, and I also am particularly interested in are there other uses that people have had a hard time with in the Shoreland District, that if we're gonna add more special exceptions, that we might wanna add, you know, tether ball courts or something like that? I don't know what, what might be the, the thing.
In sixteen years, this is the first buried tank issue I've dealt with.
In any district?
Well, in the Shoreland.
Oh, in the Shoreland, okay.
Any fallout shelters.
Yeah. No, no, just sort of think about other things that've caused people problems for Shoreland District, and maybe people that sought your advice before they went ahead and tried for permitting, 'cause they were told that it wasn't permitted, you know, that kind of thing, so if you could think about that. And, and then if we're gonna make the change in this one district, we might wanna consider others. If we're getting, digging into this.
Rich?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
She just nailed it, my thing is, is the reason we don't have tons and tons of changes is 'cause when we're making a change to our land use regulations, it's comprehensive and it touches on everything. And that's what's critical, so that, what, it's not spot zoning, it's not just, we're meeting the needs in this one area, we're doing it townwide, and for me, that uniform thing makes it way easier for those who are inspecting and trying to enforce it, and then for the ZBA who doesn't, they're, they shouldn't have to have codebooks, they should have the zoning, you know, ZBA decision, for me. Second, I think that where, as we are, as we're building in society, we're transferring from a, a lot of the way we heat our houses, and we're going away from firewood, now we're going away from heating oil, we're going back to electricity, and backup generators are coming up more and more. Our electrical suppliers are no longer in Lebanon, or Hannover, or Lebanon, or Newport, now they're like in Landau, which is why it takes an hour and a half to get a switch for when the switch blows out and takes out one leg. When it's below zero, generators are coming back on, generators are gonna be needed to be able to support a changing way that we heat our house with mini splits and other types of electrical heating. We're gonna need to have privately owned generators, and for me, a bunch of above-ground, hundred-and-ten-pound cylinders strapped to the back of a house is not the way to do it. I think there's, we're gonna find existing housing that are in land use areas that are gonna need to have more special exceptions. And I just think that Rich is the first one, that's the first time David's finding it, but I think that it's an appropriate thing for this planning board to look into allowing buried propane tanks in conservation districts or other limiting areas by special exception. That's my request, is that, from the fire department, we're requesting that the planning board looks into this and has it ready for next year, if it can't be done this year, then next year, soonest.
So I, I get the sense that the board is in support of doing an amendment, or considering putting an amendment together for next, next year's town meeting that would be, would look at other items within the zoning amendment, the zoning rules.
It's not just the Rich Brown problem, it's like a, a bigger problem.
Yeah.
By looking at it in different districts, and also possibly other things in the Shoreland District, it becomes a more comprehensive. Yeah, well, just trying to update our regulations to keep up with the times or whatever.
Yeah.
Rich, it took us, I think, three years to get, so the fire department could put in a dry hydrant. We could put in a dry hydrant as long as it wasn't near water. So, but the thing is, is they sat there and they looked, and why, they, but they looked everywhere on how they can do it. There's how we can put it in a sister, and it just takes a while. I do think, though, but for me, is, one of the balancing, why do you go underground? 'Cause it's easier for service, it's safer for the delivery of it, and we can have a larger quantity with less fittings and less possibility for environmental, you know, contamination. And the fire department's position is, if this has to wait another year, we would, our position is, we would go to the select board to ask for a, I didn't, we didn't use the word abeyance, but to ask for a year or continuance on non-judgment or non-force action to remove the tank.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any further discussion on this? I mean, I think, I think we know what we wanna do.
Right.
And are we advising Rich to go to his other petitioners to retract this, or that's totally up to him?
Totally up to him if he wants to.
Yeah.
To do so.
Okay.
How many people signed it?
About twenty, there were about twenty-nine, twenty-eight signatures.
That's manageable, you could.
It is, it is manageable, yes.
Which is more painful.
Well, I get to meet a lot of people again, you know.
Or getting it voted down.
Yeah, I mean, at least I didn't put it in the Lime Country store and have.
Yeah, and Rich, mine is, it's not for me to say, "Look, you know what, I'm not on the planning board." What I do think is, that if we're gonna wanna make a change to the planning and land use regulation, it should come through the planning board, I think there's a lot of times made where the petition is appropriate, but I think for this, a comprehensive look that treats all the districts in the situations evenly is probably a better way to do it.
Thank you.
But, yeah, I, I think that's all.
Okay. Well, let's move on to discussion approval minutes from December.
Thanks, Michael.
Good job, Nick.
I think it's December twelve?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Oh, wait, I had.
Okay.
I had just a couple. Just a type of, like, item one, second line there, I think we can take out the two adjustment between.
Yep, yep.
Just a, and then the next paragraph down, I was wondering, it was just a thought, but it says, "The purpose of the adjustments was for the National Park Service to acquire property of the Appalachian Trail currently." To acquire property the Appalachian Trail currently crosses, and then I was wondering whether we wanna add "and" for David Roe to acquire land to benefit Barrehill Associates. 'Cause there's really two parts to it.
Sure, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, it was, it's a.
I think it's Barrehill Conservancy.
Yeah, Barrehill, sorry, Barrehill Conservancy.
Is the wording of item one concerning the tax maps correct? 'Cause it just didn't. Tax map four, what, four, and lot sixty-six, tax map? Is that a singular lot?
Tax map, it's ta, it's actually lot sixty-six on tax map four fourteen. But we always refer to the tax map first, kinda gets you to the right map, and then the lot within that, and then.
Then is the "and" necessary?
But it's "and" lots, I think, is what.
Yeah, we could, we could take out, we could just say lots, you know, tax map four-ten, and, or lot sixty, forty-six point three and thirty-three point two.
Yeah, I think what he's saying is, after four-fourteen, cross out "and," and.
Yeah, just as a re.
Make that a singular lot sixty-six, 'cause there's only one lot.
And I guess, like you say, I'd also do it on, for the, the four-ten, just say, four-ten, lot sixty-three, and thirty-three point two.
Isn't it forty-six point three?
Forty-six point three, and lot thirty-three point two, those are both on tax map four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More compact.
Yep.
The only other thing.
There was a spelling error somewhere where it was Borad.
Right.
Where is that?
It's the third paragraph on page, second page. Just a typo.
Yeah.
Borad, please.
I think we're a Borad, right?
Yeah. So, so, I have a question on the findings at the bottom of page two going into page three. So what is the specific finding? The board noted that, that there were several boundary lines that had no monuments. These boundary lines are existing and are not part of the scope.
This is what Vicki was concerned.
This is what Vicki.
Yeah, and so we put it in as a finding, just so that it's noted that they were.
So we're noting that it may cause issues in the future.
Yep.
It's Vicki's, you'll be sorry.
Yeah.
No.
Well, good luck when you go out there and try to figure out where you are, or what, that's what, so.
Okay. So were, any other corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve it and amend it.
Okay, and consecutive by Tim? All those in favor, minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Nope, no opposition. So then, curb cut regulation discussion.
Yeah, I'm gonna look to, because, I'll introduce it quickly. Tim and Scott go out and look at new driveways, and the new driveway is referred to as a curb cut. And so, one of the problems that Scott has been having with some of the newer driveways is water flowing down the driveway and into the road. And part of that problem is the, the curb cut regulations, and I can.
I can read that, I have it read.
Yeah, I can pass out copies of the, the regulations for everyone. Allows for a five percent slope coming down, from the first twenty feet of the driveway being a five percent slope. And so, Scott would like to have the regulations changed so that they, that we don't allow for a slope coming down onto the road, and that water is prevented from entering the road.
Right, yeah, the way it's worded, it says, "The grade of the accessway curb cut shall be no greater than five percent for the first twenty feet, and eight percent for the next ten feet."
And I think you've.
Page four. So, I don't think he's concerned about.
Thank you, Michael.
I don't think Scott's concerned about the, the ten feet, you know. I think he's really only concerned about the first twenty feet. And, you know, you just do what you need to do to not have the water running into the road, which would, would seem like we just needed some kind of a negative slope for the first twenty feet into a road.
So practically speaking, what does that mean? You have your house on a hill, your driveway's coming down to meet the road, does that mean that you have to call in excavators and have them make the hills steeper? make the hills steeper to go down and then have some sort of flow back, I mean.
Well, we just need twenty feet, which is not too long. I mean.
They're just, they're looking for a negative pitch.
You're coming down and then you get, so you're always coming up to the road rather than.
Is that gonna be, what, what I'm trying to understand is what sort of imposition is that going to? What sort of a, a cost or difficulty is, are there houses where people are going to say, I, I don't have, I can't do that, or it's gonna, there's rock there, it's gonna be.
Well, that's, you know, you're all tender in New Hampshire, so rock is always going to be.
Well, and every driveway is different, you know, and when Scott and I go out there, we look at each driveway, you know, and they're all different things, so. Yeah, I would think if there's someone that's a total imposition, there may be a way to get around it somehow, I don't, I don't know.
So you could.
He just wants to.
You could, instead of specifying in this way, you could specify the outcome you want instead, which is that water does not run into the road. Because what, my driveway comes down like this and there's a ditch on the upward side and at the end it just cocks a little bit to throw all of the water that's coming off the driveway into the ditch, which then goes into a culvert. And if you do what you're talking about for this, just don't ever buy a WRX because you'll be ripping the front bumper off as you come up that, that little dip every time.
Yeah, or you could put a drain on the edge of the driveway that pulls the water off before it hits the road, or there's other ways to maybe address the concern, aren't there?
Yeah.
I mean, I, if you look at my driveway, which I'm not in, in line, but I have a driveway that would not be allowed in line because of the steepness. And even I have, it comes down and goes up to the road. It, it's not a, a difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I think, the other thing that Scott said was that, that most driveways aren't really crowned. I mean, sometimes they start out maybe crowned, but they end up not being crowned. So the water is just running down the middle of the driveway.
You walk down any road, like right now, and there's a huge, like, ice floe, you know, Washburn Hill, you see there's, it's slippery where all the water is coming down onto the road.
Right, right, so Scott.
Joe Malendi described my driveway as a funnel. And then, boom, it was getting washed out. Is the, is the twenty feet necessary? Because that seems to me to be maybe excessive.
No, it's the length of a car, the twenty feet you need, because that's the length of the vehicle.
Why is, why does the length of the vehicle have that?
So that you don't have part of the vehicle up the hill and part of it, like, you know, so you have front wheels on.
High centered.
Yeah, so you have, okay, so if you have, this is essentially what we're talking about. So you want to have, so that the car can be in that twenty feet without having the rear wheels up like this, so that you're, you know, on the
That's what I was saying about a Subaru WRX went down slowly, ripped the front off.
You need to have a landing spot where the car, all four wheels are on the same slope.
Yeah, but twenty feet isn't too long. I mean, I think you kind of need that for.
That's even, that's even short. I mean, like a delivery vehicle couldn't, would, would not, you know, it's not perfect for a delivery vehicle or, you know, a longer truck.
I mean, this is pretty common requirement for, well, it's definitely a requirement for any state driveway in New Hampshire and Vermont. Any driveway coming off a state road and most municipalities have a, a negative pitch.
Yes.
Requirement, whether it's fifteen feet, twenty feet, or even more.
Yeah, I mean, we've had these for twenty-five, I don't know, how, how old are these curb cuts?
These are two thousand and five.
Yeah, but I don't think they were modified.
No, they, they, they were modified in two thousand and five, but they're.
I don't think we changed it. So, no, this has been around forever.
Yeah.
And I guess before this, the road agents didn't really think about it that much or whatever.
And, and I think as time has gone on, lots that have easy access have been built on, and we're now probably getting into more lots that are, that don't have the, the easy access and will need to have the driveway put in.
Right.
And, and we've just, I mean, with climate change, we're getting gully washers, you know, twentieth, twentieth summer or something, and I mean, it's it's just something that we've got to adapt to and certainly I think Scott's got a good point.
So is, I, I missed the beginning of this. What's, what's the impetus for, for this discussion?
There's, the, the current regulation, the, the grade slopes down to the road and that's causing in many cases water coming down off the driveways and flowing into the road and freezing. Or water coming down and washing out the road.
Or I guess I've seen in places, stone, crushed stone washed out the driveway.
Yeah, when you're riding your bike, you see that all the time. Especially the dirt roads in this town all go off onto the pavement over ten.
Right, because now we allow up to a five percent grade in toward the road, so.
Ah, 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 I see, so that it's permitted to have road service and have a five percent slope. And we're suggesting that.
Become a negative slope.
Become a negative, okay, all right, all right.
How, how big of a negative slope are we talking with? Did you have draft language?
No, I mean.
What does, what does Scott want?
He didn't say specifically.
I haven't been able to get a, a number out of Scott.
Yeah.
And also the, the language in the current regulation doesn't specify whether it's a positive or a negative grade. Presumably if this driveway is sloping away from the road at five percent, Scott doesn't care about that.
Right.
And we wouldn't necessarily want to make changes in that direction.
Right.
Does, Rich, you indicated there was state, you know, state may have rules for this?
They do, yeah.
Actually, when you go, I have a state driveway permit sitting right on my desk. Let me grab that and I can read you the, how the state deals with it.
Very cool. I don't know that Scott has any specific numbers in mind. He just wants to have something that, you know, just does run with the road.
I mean, I can share what I pulled off the, the web for the town of Hanover and whether or not this is an old typed, looked like a hand typed drawing from thirty-five years ago. And they're looking for a half an inch per foot for the first fifteen feet.
Of a negative slope, yeah.
It's kind of a, a little bit of an awkward way of doing it, but it's certainly something that any contractor can understand pretty easily and even the homeowner, I think. Basically, at fifteen feet out, you're going to be seven and a half inches below the edge of the road.
Yeah, maybe, I think it might be, we were saying maybe just say, so it doesn't run into the road, but I think it might be more helpful if Scott, we have some specific numbers, because it gets a little nebulous, you know, with the guy who's doing it, you know. If Scott's saying it just can't run into the road, and then what's that mean? So I think it might be better to have.
Well, everything erodes over time, too. I mean, it's just.
But we're putting Scott in a pretty difficult position of having to argue with a contractor who says, I've been doing this for thirty years, long for thirty years, but it's not a problem.
I understand, I just think, I was just thinking there's a couple of different ways to get to the outset of the law, so that was my own thought.
So just procedurally, if I could inquire, this is a regulation, so we have the authority to make a change to this on our own without.
With a, with a single public hearing.
Yeah, and without town meet, not voting at town meet.
Ordinances have to go to the town for, and regulations can be done by the board with a public hearing.
So, um, are we going to just study this and maybe draft some language and then?
Get Scott's input.
I, I can invite Scott today because I knew we had the public hearing ahead of time. I didn't want him to, I would like to be able to schedule him at the beginning of the, the meeting so that he can be the first in and not, you know, he's out at all hours and especially in winter time, so trying to not make him hang around.
Thank you.
The town of Hartford said what Hebe said, the grade of the entrance is to be such as will permit a safe and controlled entrance to the highway at all seasons and so designed that any water from the entrance will discharge into the highway gutter or drainage system. So that's like a performance standard.
I think we also had a, had a drawing that went with this on place.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what it says on the permit itself.
Okay, yeah.
The state, the way they have it is, property owners shall grade driveways, driveway limits so that, including during construction, no stormwater runoff flows into the state and New Hampshire roadway or shoulders. Site drains shall be, not be permitted to cause ponding, ice, or ice buildup in the right of way.
Sounds like I win.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Scott's happy, Scott's happy with that.
Yeah, I, I did send that language to Scott and, you know, again, it just, it means that if he has a problem, you know, he can go back to the landowners, say, listen, there's a problem, you need to fix it. Because this is happening and he can show them, he'll take pictures and show, here's a picture of, you know, water flowing into the, the road. And then it's up to the landowner to, to fix that, and if they don't, then he comes to the planning board and the planning board goes back to the plan, the, the landowners, says, you shall fix it under RSA and whatever, get the, the RSA that the planning board has to, to enforce.
Is there anything else in the, in, if we're going to be looking at this, is there anything else that might want to be addressed? Twelve inch culverts?
Didn't we change that?
I'm thinking fifteen is more of a.
Oh, that's right, we increased it to twelve, well, four, because before they were eight or ten or something. But, yeah, we could, we could change it again.
Soda straws.
We could change it again.
Four inch permanent cup, yeah.
There again, Scott might have an input on that.
Well, I mean, the, under, you know, eight, the drainage culvert shall be new at least twelve inches in diameter and on the, the actual permit, there is a place for Scott to write down the, the size that he wants.
Even Romney has a fifteen inch minimum for the culvert size. Romney does have a grade thing that deals with slope.
Yeah, so I think that is, now that David says that, it's true, he, Scott can say whatever size culvert he wants.
Yeah, okay.
And, yeah.
And it does, you know, there are times that a fifteen inch culvert will not work with the, the grade of the, the roadside ditch.
Right.
Right.
You know, that, that's the, the big issue, that you can't put it in, you know, a plastic culvert has to be down a certain depth so it doesn't get crushed and.
And you don't want to just create a pond where.
Right, you put it down, yeah.
But I think everything else in here works pretty well, as far as Scott like to tell.
So procedurally, if we change this to have a negative slope so that it slopes away from the road, does that put half the town in violation?
No, this would be changes going forward, everything else would be.
This is, this is only on new things and.
Would be any new driveways.
And then presumably if Scotty saw a bad problem, or would that not?
If there is.
An existing driveway?
Let's say there is an existing driveway that meets the regulations at the time, but is causing a problem. He can come to the planning board and the planning board has the ability to tell the landowner that they need to fix it. Because it, any, you cannot, under state law, damage a public road. And so if your water is coming out and causing damage to the public road, doesn't matter what the grade is, you're causing damage and the planning board can step in and say, you need to fix this.
So the, the same justification for the, don't put the snow on the road, don't, um, don't leave junk in the, in the ditches.
What are we doing on sightlines? Have those been working?
Yeah.
What was the, the place up above where Vicki lives? Didn't they have a problem?
Well, there was one.
Which driveway, yeah, which?
Yeah, no, when we went out there initially, Scott and I, there was one spot on that hill where the sightlines worked. Closeways.
Have they, isn't that they used it?
That's where we said the driveway was going to go.
And have they done that or, or no?
I haven't been up there for a while.
Yeah, and I said Scott's the one that has to do, uh, look at these afterwards.
Yeah, because he drives a mile.
So if he has, if they put it in the wrong place, he needs to let me know.
Yeah, well, it was all specified. And of course then Ernst went up and put a whole new, you know, for his logging operations, he put a whole nother driveway.
Which isn't closed out and a huge amount.
It has to be, right, yeah.
Well, I don't know, whatever you said, you know, but there's a huge section of stone wall that got obliterated for the construction access. And it's all now just, you know, riprap, stone. I don't know how you specified, if anything, for it to be closed out, but it's certainly.
Well, see, we don't, that's the problem. We were only looking at the driveway, you know, the driveway.
The select board now has the ability to issue temporary permits for logging and have them removed. I think that's one of the reasons that they.
There's going to be twenty-five feet of stone wall that went down on that and these stones aren't anywhere. I mean, probably whoever, Ernst probably took them and installed them someplace else.
Well, not to pass the buck, but I, I think it is in the select boards, you know, logging.
Well, you guys should go take a look at it. I mean, it's a beautiful house and they've got a beautiful setting, but it's, it's really a shame what happened to the trees and there used to be a granite post that was there that had some historic value. And that's not around anymore either, so.
And it was probably in the town, the road right of way?
It was, but I'm sure the town, you know, didn't own it. I'm sure it was part of an old fence that was there for the farm.
Well, it'd be nice if the landowners had said to Ernst, you know, we want this wall back.
They're just, they've got three kids and they've got two jobs and, you know, they, all they want to do, I'm sure, is get into their house. They don't know these things. I mean, that's why we need to, like, help if we care about what the outcomes are.
Right. Well, at this point, David, I don't know, what, who would enforce the logging.
Well, I think it was put in prior to the select board adopting the, the temporary access permits. And I think the select board would have the, the authority to now say it needs to get put back the way it was, but I think this is one of those that slipped through the cracks but caused the select board to act. So going forward, you know, this one may not be able to, we may not have anything we can do about it. But going forward, the select board does have the ability to correct this.
Sometimes you don't need the legal authority to compel someone to do something, you could just ask them. You could just say, hey, some people in town regret the loss of a historic feature here, would you consider restoring it? Even if they're busy, they might, if somebody asked me that, I would certainly do it, at least unless, unless it was, you know, at a cost of tens of thousands of dollars or something, if it could be done without too much.
Well, you'd think they'd.
I mean, it would add value to their property.
Yeah, just on an aesthetics standpoint, you'd think they'd want to make it look nice.
Do we have a, I mean, the planning board is probably the wrong group to write a letter, just, do you have the ability to reach out to the homeowner on an informal basis and just transmit gently that, that, you know, there are people who regret the loss of those, of that historic element and wondered if they might be willing to?
I can write them a letter and ask.
Well, it's not just the granite post, but the stone wall. Me, you all deserve to drive up there and take a look.
Yeah, I need to go up there.
It's, you know, it's like how it shouldn't be done, it's pretty.
Is that an historic road?
Yeah, it's a historic road.
I mean, not historic, but like, scenic road.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
I think it's a Washburn, I think.
Well, then the stone walls.
I'm sure, but I thought it was.
Did they get permission? I mean, because it's, well, it's, this homeowners can, it's just utility in the town, they can't.
Can't.
Can't do things, the homeowners can obliterate the stone walls.
So speaking of the curb cut, uh, uh, logging curb cuts, are those, are those, I don't think are addressed in this.
That's addressed through the, the, the select board because the, the select board does all the intent cuts.
Well, and roads.
That's what I was saying, which the, Scott and I don't look at, we only look at driveway, you know, driveways. That's all we have purview, not the logging.
And as you know, for your intent cuts, you have to get permission from the select board to
Right.
open up.
And that's just in the last year that we've had to do that?
It's pretty interesting because the state, the state waves, like, any wetlands permitting for crossings of wetlands or, or brooks for logging, because it's a temporary thing. And it's unbelievable, some of the bridges that get put in and never get pulled out because the state's not really watching and then all of a sudden, oh, guess what? That's where the driveway is going and the house. And so they've got all this with no permitting. It's pretty crazy. So I think that the ability to get it taken away or closed out or whatever is really important.
Yeah. So how are we going to proceed on this? Tim, are you, you going to talk to? Tim, are you, you gonna talk to Scott about this?
Well, maybe, do we wanna talk about it at next meeting and has Scott come in the next meeting?
I can absolutely ask him.
I mean, we've talked about it a little bit the last meeting and it feels to me like we need to have something to act on.
I, I think if we bring in Scott and, you know, just talk with him, decide what exactly he would like.
Which approach he wants, just the.
The performance approach or the number approach.
Performance approach or the number approach.
And then, yeah, however, I think, I at least would like to include him in that decision.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And so then talk with him, I can ask him if he wants to, if he's available for the next meeting.
Isn't it a whole lot easier just to, like, send him a little note, what would you prefer? Because, I mean, he has to get up early and.
Well, he'd say he'd be willing to come in.
Okay, he wants to come in?
Yeah.
Good man.
And looking at the ten day, we've got no major snow coming, so.
As long as you're.
Yeah, those weather reports are always dead on.
Yeah, right. And you know what, you know, they had, how about the little flurry we got? And they had to plow that and sand it.
Yeah.
You know, it's still a lot of work, even if we don't have a big snowstorm.
Right, right. Okay, there is a football game going on tonight.
It's on Amazon Prime, I can put it up there for you.
Who's playing?
I think it's Texas and Notre Dame. So, other things, it feels to me like we should also be thinking about getting back to our housing discussions. And I'm not gonna be here next meeting, but I, I was thinking, I don't know how people feel about this. But if, I'm wondering if I could ask if those people who made an invite to one of our housing speakers might be willing to put down, you know, five or six bullet, four to five, six bullet items on what we learned so that we could maybe put together a document of, a summary of, of the topics that we discussed or reviewed with outside people. And at least that kinda documents to ourselves and reinforces, we could have a little discussion on, what, if anything, did we learn? What, what might apply to Lyman, what might not apply to us? And then see where we, where we want ahead from, from them, you know, perhaps continuing to work on the, the language. And there's been discussion about a survey, but, yeah, I kinda feel like we wanna do that. And then we, looks like we've got an ordinance amendment to think about for next year, so.
And then that whole thing with the, I don't know, CBA and cleaning of the zoning, that's really important.
And, yeah, Tim has mentioned, I think, a couple of times that we might wanna have some discussion with the zoning board and to, to find out what kind of issues they're coming across that they don't quite understand within the zoning ordinance and be able to address those questions. Perhaps, I would think perhaps in a joint meeting with them, if they were so inclined and we were inclined. And that could also add to our work list of potential work on an amendment for next year.
Yeah, I just think it's really important that the two boards work together. I mean, it's crazy, cause right now the CBA is really, I think, has negative feeling. We smell Bill Malcolm about the planning board and we just don't work together. And they, you know, if they don't, Bill told me, if they don't understand something or they don't, they don't enforce it. So, you know, that's crazy. I mean, and I think, Dave, you know places of the zoning where it's not clear.
Egg soils, as I've been saying for years.
Yeah, you've been saying this for years. So we need.
Section is.
I think we need to really strip, you know, fix these areas that aren't clear for everybody. So, yeah.
To go back to the previous point, I will send a link to all the YouTube videos for those four presentations.
That would be terrific.
I'll send them to David, so if anybody needs to review the game films.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be good.
Do you have the, I mean, we almost lost John Stadler on the egg soil thing, but that's the link we should have because, I mean, I think we talked that to death and could never get anywhere on that.
Oh, I know, and it's still, if nothing got changed, it's not.
Nothing to change.
This is years and years ago.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, oh, right.
That's when John was, and we, we spent a lot of time, and I think I threw my notes away from that, you know, just cause it sounds like we're not ever gonna get back to that, so I, but.
Well, so it's the, the special exception for building on egg soils and in particular is the, how you deal with.
The twenty-five percent.
The twenty-five percent over.
Of what?
Of something that was subdivided.
Right, yes, yes.
You know, that is.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and it's up to twenty-five percent.
I distinctly remember that, that issue.
We've suffered, I mean, it's almost.
There's videotape of that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So.
No, I know. Do we wanna re, maybe replay that for everybody so that we don't have?
Just to make everybody feel terrible?
Well, no, but we don't have to, we don't have to rediscover all the dead ends. I mean, here are all the dead ends and it.
Well, you can tell us newer members on this side of the room.
Summarize for us.
Yeah, summarize and we'll.
Well, it's.
We'll equivocate on that.
Just read the, the, in the, the.
The minutes of the meetings?
No.
Well, no, in.
Egg soil.
The, the four-six. There's one section of egg soils, four-six-four. And the special exception, just read through the special exception. And it talks about if a lot had been subdivided or is being subdivided, how to break it up. And just go through your, and, and try to figure out how you would do that under the zoning ordinance, if you were on the zoning board. And you'll look at it and it, it just, it makes.
Well, we couldn't fix it, I mean, a lot of times.
Yeah, and it just.
So, maybe what we need to do is, like, totally scrap it.
I, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with you that scrapping it and coming up with a different method that is workable. And I, I understand what they're trying to do, but, you know, if you have a lot that was subdivided ten years ago into two lots and one person wants to build on the egg soils and you have to apply that twenty-five percent to the entire lot, how do you do that, you know, and legally? I mean, how can you say, well, you're gonna get this much and then go to the, the, and if the next person says, I wanna use egg soils, and say, well, you can only use this much because your neighbor already used a bunch.
Oh, boy.
Well, it's kind of like what we did with the allowing, like, lot averaging. Because, and in that case, there was kind of like a restriction that was put on, for example, of a lot, if you were, like, creating a lot that didn't have zoning required frontage, the other lot got all the frontage, but you needed to, like, tell the other lot that actually they can't use that frontage cause it's kind of a credit to the smaller lot. And so there needed to be something that was legally instituted. And it should have been that that, whatever rights you had to develop in egg soils was established at the time and, and then passed along as a property right, rather than trying to tease it all out, you know.
Well, actually, I think it is, you know, having that subdivision would be the ideal way of, of dealing with it.
But that didn't happen.
That didn't happen.
Now what? Yeah, so it's hard to conform now because you can't figure that out.
Yeah, well, you know, the bottom line is, I think, it's not right to have parts, parts of the zoning that we don't understand and we don't agree with.
So it's unfortunate that Bill, I mean, Malcolm has a negative opinion.
Well, I think.
Is he a specific characteristic?
Yeah, no, but he, I think, David, correct me, but it was several years ago, the CBA asked for planning board or direction and some of this stuff.
We tried.
And we didn't, I guess they got the impression that we didn't really help them. You know, we were kinda just pressuring them off, which may, probably wasn't true, but that's the impression we got. So they just, you know, Bill says, oh, the planning board isn't helping us.
Face to face would be really helpful.
Yeah, and you really try to.
Well, also, if they had some ideas about how to solve the problems, that would be helpful too. Because they might have thought, well, if it said this, we could do it like that and that would be fair and, you know, a good outcome.
But see, the problem now is that Bill's the only person that's been on the CBA for very long at all. I mean, all these new people are there and no criticism of them, but they have no clue about the zone. Cause they're just so new, I mean, they don't know anything.
They've not encountered any of these.
Right.
It was again with the home on the Connecticut issue, giving the, the variance for.
Yeah, the guy with the road frontage, wanted to subdivide the next lot up, right?
Well, no, this one, he was looking at an existing building to convert it to two more lodging units. And the conversion said, well, it doesn't have sewer or water, so you can only convert it to a single-family dwelling, even though you can't have a single-family dwelling on that property because the use is lodging and accommodations. And so.
And that's something else we should be looking at, is establishing the transient thing.
Oh, absolutely.
Get rid of the use of lodging accommodation and just say, well, we can have all these multifamily things that used to be lodging accommodations or something. I mean, you know, that needs to be cleared up.
Right, that's another, another area, yeah, that we need to clear up.
But again, if you.
Cause that's not fair.
If you're walking through the conversion process, you know, if you have an existing building that doesn't have any sewer or water, you cannot convert it to anything other than single-family, even if there are other uses available to you. And that just, to me, does not seem.
And you have to wait five years.
Yeah, you have to, no, you can convert to a single-family and then wait five years and then you could convert it to more.
Doing something else.
But now you're, it's a, a single-family dwelling, it's a residence, and so you can't convert it to anything other than residences.
Is that an ordinance?
That's in the ordinance, yes.
So that's, that was, when we were talking to the lady from, on Zoom, the town over.
Sandwich.
Sandwich. That was one of the ordinances that they, they passed ten ordinances to make things a little friendlier. And that was one of them.
Yeah.
So just, you know, reviewing that, the conversions. And a lot of times, you know, when you take and read things, it sounds okay, but if you take and try to logically work with this particular scenario and work through the ordinance, I'm a programmer, everything kinda flows. And so this goes to this, goes to this. And when you do that, you find that it doesn't make sense.
Well, isn't there another one of those in the lawn common district about no new offices?
Yep, you have, you have your, not, you can convert into an, an existing building, but you can't build a new building and put in a new office into that.
There'll be a lot of stuff we need to clean up.
Yeah, that's my point. Yeah, yes, and as I keep saying, we gotta work, the CBA has to be comfortable with this so they can do their job, not to say, we don't understand what this is and we're not even gonna deal, you know, we're not gonna force it. Yeah.
All right.
Well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Do we have an action item about inviting the zoning board? Do we have an action item, do we wanna invite the CBA to join us at some point?
Sure.
Yeah, maybe we should, I don't know, how do we wanna do that, Dave? What's the best way? Maybe we should talk about trying to solve some of these issues.
Yeah, I would, I can give you the last list that I had that I'd given the board, I don't know how many years ago, from Frank Bowles.
Great.
Yeah.
That's good, yeah, that's a good start. Cause those problems haven't gone away.
Cause I think Eevee, we should meet with the CBA, but I don't, I don't think they're gonna be able to help us too much because they're also brand new. We need to come up with solutions and then explain, you know, have them come and say, this is why we think this is the way it should be.
But I mean, maybe just, you know, cookies and chat, even if it's not specific.
Yeah, well, I think having, you know, say, here's, you know, the list of things that we are aware of and, you know, take it from there and say, is there other, you know.
Right, we can, I mean, we should, we should review that as well.
Right, well, that's.
And then you can send it to the zoning board.
Oh, they had, I've sent it to them recently also.
Okay, all right, so they already know that. And then that gives us some grounds and they can say, oh, wait, and another thing.
Yeah, absolutely, yep. And like I said, most of them are new. I think, Dave, I don't know if you guys, did you get to the appointment of the other Tom Toner?
We did, we took it up, I think Ben is gonna come talk to you about it.
Okay, so we may or may not have.
Did you see that?
I know what you're thinking, but actually I've, I've had some good talks with him on it and he understands the position of the board, that it's not a, a, I don't like zoning, so I'm gonna give everything away. He's, I actually think he's gonna work out, would work out very well if the board approved.
Yeah, cause the CBA really has to follow the zoning. They don't have much leeway.
Right. It's been very hard finding new members. It has been, nobody wants to, to do anything.
Nobody wants to tell somebody what to do with their property. It's a really tough position to be in.
Yeah, everybody loves zoning and it keeps you from doing something you wanna do.
Or if you have to tell, you know, if you're the person in the, you know, deciding, it's hard to say no. I heard about, we were gonna adjourn?
I think we should adjourn.
I'll move. I'll move to adjourn.
Adjourn.